Just make sure everybody signs in on it, so we have an accurate count of who's here. The first item on our agenda is additions or deletions to the agenda, and we have a couple that we would like to add. One of them is a short executive session at the end of the meeting regarding a update on our union grievance that we have in process right now. There will be no action taken after it, it's just an update for the board. And the addition of a agenda item for a cemetery deed. Other than that, the agenda stays pretty much the way it is. Any other additions or deletions? I think that should be it. Next item is to approve our minutes from our July 5th Select Board meeting and our July 13th Select Board meeting. We could start with our July 5th meeting and entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Lee's the motion, and Ariana's the second. Anybody have any changes, omissions, errors, deletions, actions on those minutes?
Aye, none.
All set with them? Everybody's happy with them?
None.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as written for our July 5th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And we'll go on to our special July 13th meeting, the Select Board minutes for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the special Select Board meeting, July 13 minutes.
Second.
Lee's the motion, and Ariana's the second. Anybody have any corrections or changes or anything with those minutes?
I have none.
None.
All set. All those in favor of approving those July 13th special Select Board meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Could roll right around through this one maybe. Next item is citizens' comments. If there is someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments?
Oh, Scott Blair.
Scott Blair, you have your hand up?
Yep, thanks, Ari.
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to give an update to the board about the cannabis shop that I'm opening up and would like to invite anybody to Seven Pine View Drive to come take a tour of the facility. We are close to being completely done with the construction project, and we are actually due to be on the state CCB licensing meeting on August 30th. So we've been giving tours to the EMS and to some of the CC, the Cannabis Control Commission for Chester. Some members have come and take a tour, so I wanted to extend the invitation to any Select Board member that wants to set up a time to come check it out. I'm open, and my business partners are more than happy to do the tour for you guys.
Well, thanks for that update, Scott, and I think you'd be a welcome addition to the business community in town. It'd be interesting to see what it's all gonna, how it's all gonna work out for you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other citizens' comments? Next item on our agenda is old business, and Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. There's just a couple quick things. Not much going on, that's not flood-related at the moment, but Citizen Advisory Committee, Sam Bailey, is leaving the area, so she is stepping down from that position. So I will be advertising for another candidate for that spot. We'll bring that before you at your September meeting for an appointment there. And the solar field, I have reached out to Greenbacker again, we did get a response this time. I am being told that their appraisal should be in in the next week or two, and that will be shared with us as soon as they have it. And then more for citizens in the community that are watching, the V-HAP program, it's an acronym, I don't know what it stands for, is a utility program that the state put out several months ago. It is to help people that are behind in mortgage payments, rent payments, utility payments, delinquent taxes, those types of things. That program had closed, it is now reopened, and there was a cap per household of 30,000, there's now a cap of 40,000. So people who took advantage of that program before and were capped at 30, there is another 10,000 that they are eligible to apply for, and that is federal funding flowing through the state, money that came as a result of the COVID bills that went through Congress a couple years ago. So I like to get that out there. There were a lot of people in Chester that took advantage of that. Our delinquent tax and delinquent utility accounts are less than they've ever been in my 19 years here because of this program, so it is helping people. So that's more just an information for people in the community. That's it for me for old business.
Any board members have anything on old business?
Not at this time.
Next item on our agenda is our yearly review on one of our funds that we have in town. It's our Chester Economic Development Fund, and we usually get a yearly review on it, and Remus Prada is here from M&amp;T Bank to give us a little update on it and to answer any questions or concerns that any board member might have regarding this fund.
Thank you. Thanks for making the time for us.
Remus, if you could come sit right up by the mic so Zoom can get it.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't know your name.
I'll introduce you. I'll introduce you.
Thank you. Because usually there's, I think it was.
Usually Gary.
Mr. Gary Gibbs.
Gary's no longer with the bank.
So Remus Prada with Wilmington Trust, which is an addition of M&amp;T Bank. We do the investment trust for the bank, and this is my colleague, John Collin. Actually, Gary Gibbs left the bank, he left for Green or Pasture Center, and so you're a great name for John Collin. I worked for John Collin for about 12 years, and you have some many years of experience.
Oh, like 35.
So he's been heading up the investment for the bank for about 12 years. I've been with the bank for 15 years. So you're in very, very capable hands to put it, honestly. I think, you know, if you look at the account, it's held up pretty well. Last year was a tough year, but luckily so far this year it's increased stock. So I think John is the investment officer on it now. I'm still the administrator, and I'm gonna ask the long question I asked earlier here, do you anticipate needing any substantial funds from this account?
No, nothing that's not currently available in cash, no.
I mean, usually you ask that question because there's a timeframe involved if there was gonna be a substantial withdrawal on funds from it?
That's right, exactly. So it helps John sort of figure out, you know, how to raise the cash in a somewhat sane manner.
And what is that timeframe to with, for, you know, if there was gonna be a withdrawal or a loan given out?
There's no specific timeframe, it's just a matter of, if we know in advance, we don't have to raise cash, let's say, in an inopportune moment. You know, we have the market down significantly, we get a call, you need cash, and we're raising in a down market. If we know, let's just say, three months in advance, well, during that three months, we can accumulate the cash.
There will be a, there will, there will be a request in either fall or spring, the board has approved, up to 20,000, although I do not believe it will be that much, I think it will be closer to the 10,000 for a project that's being done on the green. I wouldn't anticipate needing that until late fall, and like I said, possibly spring of next year.
That would be easy to do, because the normal level of cash is about 2.5%.
Correct.
And that's gonna be somewhere in the 11, 12.
Right on, money.
Yeah, yeah.
So second, John, John will kind of give you an overview of where the economy's markets are, and he'll be happy to tell a little bit about the account and to answer any questions that you may have.
First, by May, I've been with the bank for 15 years, so I've worked pretty closely with Gary over that time, I know Gary very well. And as Remus pointed out, I have decades of experience in this business. Probably Tom, I was gonna say white hair, but I don't have much here. So I'm somewhat familiar with the account, just simply from talking to Gary. In regard, in regard to what you have in front of you, this is as July 31st. I do have reports as of June 30th, since that's an official end of quarter, if you want that through your record, but I wanted you to have the most current information in terms of the numbers.
Yeah, we have it through June 30th downstairs.
Yeah.
And the board has a copy of it through June 30.
The packet that was handed out was the June 30th, and I guess this is the newer one.
Yeah.
In regard to an overview, as far as the economy is concerned, the economy is still growing pretty, pretty well. It's not dynamic, but it's growing on the order of about 2.5, 3%. Now, that sounds low, and it is relatively low, but the thing is, that's where we were before the pandemic. So despite the Federal Reserve raising rates rather substantially and quickly, the economy has helped in, same thing in terms of employment. Employment numbers have come down, and employment has weakened, but if you just look at the numbers themselves, those are pretty good, healthy numbers. And the reason I mention all that is because that's one of the reasons why the market has been doing well. The fear was we were going to go into a recession, good old-fashioned recession, that hasn't proven to be the case. The reason being is, the consumer is still out there spending, they still are financially healthy, and inflation has come down, the Fed has been successful. So we would expect that the markets are gonna continue to gain, that we should go into 2024 in good shape. In terms of the second half of the year, I would expect the economy, again, to continue to grow pretty modestly, but continue, employment to be good. I don't expect the type of performance that we saw in the equity markets in the first half and the second half. The reason for that is, is pretty simple. Part of what's driven the performance in the first half is a very limited number of stocks, basically seven stocks, and stocks that are technology in one way or another. So if you looked at, at what's called a growth index, that was up 31%. You look at the market overall, that was up like 70%. I don't expect that type of momentum to continue, so my expectation for the second half is something a little more modest on your side. On the fixed income side, I think the Fed is pretty much done in terms of raising rates, so I think that market's gonna be stable. What that means to your portfolio, your portfolio is very diversified, so your portfolio, in sort of the mix of fixed income and equities, has pretty much kept pace with me. Right now, you've got pretty much a balanced portfolio, not exactly the kind of roughly 50/50 between fixed income and equities. I would expect that in the second half of the year, it's gonna continue to keep pace with me.
Have any questions?
Yeah, actually, I have a question. Thank you for coming and explaining what you're explaining. Can you explain to me your philosophy of investing, and whether or not you consider ESG factors in your investments?
We, depending on the client, we do, we do not in this portfolio, but we could do that very easily.
Before you answer that, ESG, can you?
ESG is environmental, social, and governance.
Oh, thank you.
And it's a means of looking at investment relative to ethics or whatever. So what I've seen and heard is that ESG investment is not a good way to invest public funds because it doesn't return the same level of income as investing in equities and stocks, so.
The, this might sound strange, but most ESG portfolios are very heavily weighted toward technology-type stocks. So as a, as a result, they are typically very growthy-type portfolios. So depending on the market you've got, the equity market you have, you're either gonna do very well, or you're not gonna do so well. It's not a very, they're typically not very well-balanced in terms of exposure to the value of cheap stocks versus broken expensive stocks. It is not socially responsible investing. So if there's an objective to, you know, exclude tobacco or oil by doing ESG, that's not what happens. If everything's done on a scale, you can have an oil company, an ESG portfolio, because they do very well on corporate governance. And that's, that's, you know, that's the G in ESG. This portfolio is not ESG. We do have strategies where we can employ ESG. In general, our investment philosophy is to be risk-averse. We try to manage growth versus risk, not just pure growth, but what risk are we taking to generate that growth? So the fact that the portfolio is performing in line pretty much with the benchmarked markets, that's what we aim to do.
Excellent, thank you. So when you ask a question like that, is that a directive that the town would control if we were interested in investing it in a different way and requesting that it be more of a, something to be accounted for in the investments? Because otherwise, you just go the, the way you would normally go?
That's correct.
Unless we directed anything different, if we wanted to change things? And your idea is saying, if I get this right, it's not as good as investment, investment as a traditional one would be, once you put that ESG on.
That's correct.
And is that an easy thing to distinguish between the two? It sounds like they're kind of.
It's easy to do because of the screening software we have, where we can screen on companies and rent. But as I said, the odds are you wind up with a portfolio that's more volatile than what you have now.
All right, thank you.
It depends on what's in your, excuse me, what's in your investment policy statement.
Right, and what our goals are.
Some select boards sometimes don't wanna invest in tobacco. Well, doing ESG is not necessarily gonna accomplish that. You're just better off saying, no tobacco, and then we exclude tobacco stocks.
And the big thing now, it seems, are fossil fuels, a lot of people are trying to divest from fossil fuels because of what's happening in the future. And I guess that would be a conversation for the board and a policy that I don't think we have that exists at this point.
Well, my opinion on this is that we let the experts make those decisions. I mean, for us to dictate or direct or suggest how to invest our money in a way that we're not, I'm not an expert anyway, it doesn't make sense to me, let these guys do their job. And from what I'm seeing, we're making excellent return on our investments, so I just say, let them go.
Yeah, and I understand that, but there's also that part of that, that socially conscious part of it. And are you happy with an investment that you might not agree with, some of the things you're investing in? And that's a whole different discussion to have as a board and a policy.
But we can.
But it is a discussion that, I don't know if it's something we wanna do or not.
If we're gonna do.
Not tonight. But it's, that's a good point that you brought up, because I never thought of that, investment and that, you know, from that aspect. And do we have a policy, or what are?
We do, we do.
We do, and before we got into this, we were very clear in communicating, I think we were clear, Remus, weren't we? About what our goals were. And so, and we did spend a lot of time deciding on what to do and how to do it, and hand it over to the experts. And to tell you the truth, I've been on the Select Board, I'm going into my, this is my ninth season, and I don't know what, when we did this, but it's kind of a thing I'm really proud of, because I, I can't remember the amount we put in. It was a lot less.
Hell below this.
And it was making 50 bucks a year or something. And so I'm really happy with the progress that we've made and that this fund is here, and I like the way it's being managed.
Any other questions?
Well, it looks like most of it's mutual funds and things like that, there is nothing here that's calling out an individual company, so you're prob, it's probably pretty diverse as it is right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
And for a portfolio of your size, that's the best way to go.
Yeah.
This way you don't get heavily impacted by a small group of stocks.
Do you remember how much it was?
I don't.
When we started?
Yeah, I'd have to look.
140?
Right here.
Somewhere around there?
A little under 300, I think.
Well, I'm not sure that's, that goes back to the beginning, but I have to look at it.
I'm not sure that inception date is correct.
Yeah.
But anyway.
That's the inception of the chart.
Yeah.
The program, each of them is all very good, say.
Right.
Well, it's more than we started with.
A lot more.
A lot more. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for the update, and appreciate the work you're doing for the town in, on the, on the investment side, and hopefully we'll continue upward from there, but boy, the economy scares me sometimes, and all this finance stuff scares me because I don't understand most of it.
Yeah.
That's why we have jobs.
Yeah.
Right.
Thanks again.
We appreciate your business, and thank you for your time.
Thanks again. Have a nice ride.
Safe travels.
Thank you, thank you, Remus.
The next item on our agenda is a request from the Chester Andover Family Center for use, well, basically to parade through town from the vet clinic over to the pinnacle for a dog walk event on Sunday, October 15th. Strut your mutt. I mean, usually these things are pretty straightforward. Matt from the rec department has no issues with it, the police department has no issues with it. I don't, I don't see anything on here that raises any red flags, it's going for a great cause, be interesting to see how it works out. And do we need a motion on this, Julie?
You do.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
To approve the request, to have strut your dog walk.
So it's for Sunday, October 15th, and it sounds like it's gonna be starting around 10:00, and going over to the pinnacle, and whatever time they're gonna finish out in the afternoon, I imagine, that day.
Yeah.
So Heather's the motion, is there a second on it?
I second it.
Lee's the second. Anybody have any questions or concerns or anything else about this before we?
Do. Do we have scooper, scoopers available?
It's all in the.
Yeah.
It's in here. You get bandanas, and I can't bring my dog, that's for sure.
I will not be.
Seven-month-old, and she's out of her mind. Way too much energy. All those in favor of approving the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Strut your mutt. Anybody opposed? All set on that? Next item on our agenda.
Julie, did the dog walk, did the dog walk thing need a signature? No, there's no signature, just approval from the board. Yeah.
Next item is short-term rentals. We've had discussions regarding short-term rentals before. We passed an ordinance for registration for the town. I forget, it's been in effect since April 1st, I believe, that the registration process has started. Granicus is the corporation or the group that has been collecting our data, they're a little slow in getting it, but they have gotten us the information that we requested, and it's in your packet. Hugh Quinn is here from the Planning Commission to help us with, if we have any questions or concerns. And it's on the agenda because when we first went through this, the main thing that we wanted to do was get some information, get some data to help us form our decisions in the future, and whether we wanted to take this further or not, or to change the ordinance, or whatever options that there, there are that we could do. The Planning Commission has had meetings since then, and they have included in our packet some information regarding some of the numbers that are applicable to our town, and also some short-term regulation options, and what they entail, and how they work, and what's been happening around the state in different places. And I wanted to open up this discussion to see if it's anything else that we wanna do as a town, now that we have this information. There's a lot of concern of, of citizens in this town that short-term rentals are growing and taking up housing that could be available for people that live in this area, but they can't afford it. It's, the registration process was just the first part of it, and now that we have this information, I would like, I wanted to have a discussion about possibly what our future action is, or what, how we wanna proceed with this. Do we just wanna leave it and put it aside? Or is there something we think we should do, or should we not do, or however we wanna approach this?
Well, it's interesting to me that there are 64 identified STRs, although the map showing the locations, and there's four different identifiers, compliant, non-compliant, unknown compliance status, and not yet identified. Wondering if somebody can tell us what that actually means? I'm assuming your client means that the, the STR is in accordance with whatever the zoning regulations are at that location, but you were able to answer that question?
Yeah. So the map was meant to show kind of just a snapshot of where they are. The different statuses, you really can't take anything away from those right now, because what you would expect to see is a bunch of green dots. And if it's a green dot, what it means is, it's a short-term rental, they've filled out their registration, they're following all of the rules of the ordinance, and they would show up as green. But because we haven't actually implemented the registration process yet to basically have short-term rental operators submit their registration, pay their fee, when that starts happening, you would expect all the red dots to go green. And I guess the other ones, the blue one and the gold one, not yet identified, really means there's a property out there that's being listed on a short-term rental platform, but we haven't been able to connect it to anything Chester knows in their listers database as to the actual details of the property itself. So that's what the gold triangle is. An unknown compliance status, I'm not completely sure what that is at this point. Part of the reason for that is, as you know, Granicus is a little behind schedule, so while they've gotten us the data, and we can start looking at it to see what's happening, there's many other phases of the project to send out letters, put the online portal in place, all of the things that need to happen to get the process implemented that are still yet to be done. And Preston can probably speak a little more to what the schedule for that is. I don't know what the schedule for that is, I just know it's, it's running behind.
So, so can I clarify something?
Yeah.
Hugh, so what we thought was gonna be implemented in April hasn't been implemented yet.
Correct.
Okay, because we were banking on this company to do it?
Well, it's a combination of a number of things. Yes, it's the company, and part of that, the ability to execute, is our ability, from the town's point of view, to get our tax information to match to what they're finding in the short-term rental platform. So it's a collaboration between the town and the company. The town, Kathy Hasbrook, has done a great job in getting all the information that Granicus needs so they can connect the dots. But I think what I'm understanding, and Preston can clarify this, is Granicus ran into an issue where they couldn't get a project manager to work on the Chester project, so the Chester project pretty much sat on hold for, you know, since whenever we signed the contract. They have assigned a project manager, there is kickoff. They have assigned a project manager. There is kickoff meeting, so that problem's been resolved and things will start. But they're clearly behind schedule.
Okay. And so if I wanted to be a short-term rental and I came to Town Hall and said, "I want to register," what would I be told?
I don't know. Preston, what have you been telling people?
You're muted.
I think you're muted, Preston. Can't hear you.
I do get that question from the time to time, and I just say, "You'll have to wait and you will hear from us."
Okay. Thank you.
So the process that we have now that says there are sixty-four short-term rentals, that's what we have. That's a definite.
That's a real number, yes.
But that doesn't mean they're registered, they already did all their work or anything else. That's just identified through going through the data banks that are out there. So there's sixty-four of them in there. None of them have registered, none of them have gone any further because of the things that you said, of what are going on and stuff. So do you think there's going to be more than that then? Or that's the sixty-four that's identified unless things change on a day?
I mean, I think if you look at the graph on the second page, which is sort of a trend graph, short-term rentals tend to come and go. You know, sometimes there's sixty, sometimes there's seventy or eighty. They fluctuate based on, you know, what people are doing with their properties and maybe seasonal-related activities. You can see from that trend line, it's sort of around probably the beginning of mud season, things kind of trailed off. If you're looking at that second page in the green line, you can see the green line starting to drop off. So that's sort of the end of ski season. So you could find that the trend line is going to fluctuate over time. And I think probably maybe one important thing to keep track of is, you know, over time, does that trend line stay basically flat with seasonal adjustments? Or is it ramping up? And we don't really know that yet. We don't have enough data.
I think the-- First, I'll disclose, I have a short-term rental. So I'm going to disclose that right off the bat. But because we don't have any enforcement, I mean, I'm working on getting what I have. I've done the fire inspection. I have oodles of work to do, but you can't get it because of the flood. But no, this, no one's getting a letter that says that you have to do this. Where I think when you get it down to, and particularly when you get to more than eight and you get the fire inspector to come through, you're going to see a drop in the number because of the amount of work that you have to do to make it a real rental is, it's pretty significant. Now, I think that, even looking at the trend lines, the-- Well, first, I think we need to get the housing commission together, and I'd really like to hear what they have to say. I think as long as it's not really spiking up, we were thinking before it was running around eighty. Eighty-four was the number--
We were thinking eight percent is what I was, under the impression it could be as high as.
Well, I think it is if you look at, you know, March.
Right.
The number is closer to eighty. And, you know, the folks that, you know, one of the statistics on this first sheet that's probably not completely clear is there's seventeen short-term rentals that advertise more than eight guests. Those are the seventeen that have to get the fire marshal to come out and they have to have a more rigorous process for getting their registration.
Excuse me. They have to because of what?
Because--
We have an ordinance that says they have to?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. The state of Vermont says--
Okay, thank you. So state of Vermont ordinance says eight or more and you have a higher barrier to entry?
They have a higher bar to jump. And so eight and below is basically a self-attestation.
Yep.
Property owner fills out the forms and attests to all the things they're doing.
Forms. Who is requiring forms? We're not yet.
Well, we, part of the--
Registration?
Part of the process that's being, you know, driven by this engagement we have with Granicus is they'll develop the letters that go out to the properties.
Right. Those don't exist yet.
They don't. And they'll develop the application process, which will be either probably online. I guess you could do it in paper if you came in, but online. So all of it will be--
Well, the thing is, is the town is not requiring anything. The town is requiring that you match the state. You need to do all your state stuff in order to register for the town. So it's the state fire marshal, and you got to answer to all the state stuff, and then the town will give you permit.
For eight or more.
Even for eight, eight less, you're going to fill out a per year still, you're going to self-certify to the state.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. So there are some regulation out there from the state level. We're talking about whether to ordinance and expand those regulations.
We have an ordinance.
Right, we have one ordinance. Right. But I believe the question we started was, do we want to do anything? And so having looked at all this beforehand, and I guess, I should say, I stay in Airbnbs at least once a month all over the country and the world, so I utilize the short-term rental program constantly everywhere. So I appreciate the program. I think it's clear from conversations that have happened here in Town Hall and also around town that two large concerns about short-term rentals are the impact it's having on our affordable housing market, so what it's doing to the inventory of available housing, but also what it means to our support services, the strain on our water, strain on infrastructure that happens when you're turning over guests on a regular basis. Those seem to, it's not, we're not saying we have an issue with the business of having a short-term rental. We're talking about ways in which it impacts our community, a shortage of housing, and the impact on our infrastructure. Is that accurate?
That's, I believe that's a lot of it. A lot of it also is, we have a, basically a business that is unregulated in our town. Whereas a motel, or an inn, or a restaurant, or a car replace, a car repair place, or anything is regulated. This one is basically, you could do it wherever you want without any input from the town, and you could basically set up shop anywhere. And that's the only-- And that's the only business that we allow that to happen with.
And there's other concerns. My understanding is that we don't want big corporations coming in buying a lot--
Multiple properties.
And so only two are operated and owned by people who have multiple properties.
Well, there's only two owners of multiple properties. How many properties do each of those owners have?
Yeah.
I don't know the exact number, but it's pretty low. Like, I think each of--
One of them is two. I'm aware of one of them.
Okay. They don't own ten.
They own more than one.
Great.
Less than five.
But that was a--
Yeah, that was a concern.
That's a big concern six, eight months ago. And so I'm happy to see that.
Is, are the numbers a surprise at all to you, the planning commission?
No, actually, these numbers are fairly consistent with what we saw when we first started looking at it. Although I think when we looked at it originally, the number was more like seventy-nine or eighty. So this number is lower. But, and I think the only thing I can say about that is, I'm not going to try to make-- I wouldn't make any decisions about how things are trending until we get through a full annual cycle. Because I believe in leaf season, in ski season, in some of these other seasons, it'll go from sixty-four maybe to eighty or something like that. I don't know, but--
But we'll get the data.
Yeah, we'll get the data.
And a lot of that depends on, I guess, when these people advertise. If they're not advertising, they're off the radar. We don't even know. So there could be a lot more that are not advertising right now because they don't want to have any rentals now until the season comes up.
It could be, yeah. So if you take your property off the, you know, off the hosting platform, like if you remove it from Airbnb or VRBO, then it will not get picked up in this data.
So I'm looking at this graph on page two, and it looks like it starts in October of 2021. So we have two and a half years of data--
I looked it up.
Here. Or am I misreading that?
No, actually, it looks that way, so, yeah.
So if we look at the trend from the left side of the chart to the, to now, it's going up.
Yeah, it's going up a little bit, although it does drop back down.
It does drop back down, yeah. And I'm, the other question is relative to STR listings versus rental units. What does that actually mean?
Yeah, that's, you know, I think what you can take away from that is, STR rental units are the actual properties themselves. The listing is just the website they've chosen to advertise it on.
Okay.
So if they've advertised it on Airbnb and VRBO and whoever may else, then obviously the number of listings will be higher because it's one property listed multiple times. So you'll probably always see the listings number higher than the unit number. But the units are the actual--
So the green line, the rental units, is the one we should be paying attention to?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
What's the timing on getting people registered?
Preston?
Yeah, if I could just make a few comments. We started out with, like Hugh said, around eighty, and we said there was eight percent of the housing force. As we got into it, we eliminated people like the Fulton that have Airbnb listings of their rooms. And that's part of what brought it down to the sixty-five number. I'll also say that the state does require that people of eight and more need to be inspected, but they have no way of knowing who they are or requiring it. So by us instituting this program, at least when it's finally instituted, they'll need a certificate from us, and they can't get the certificate unless they have, you know, had the Division of Fire Safety come. Now, the big question you're asking is, how soon will this get implemented? And I'm not going to give any kind of a whitewash to it. I'm quite disappointed in the company that's providing it, but I've chosen to say that we're continuing to make progress and that, you know, taking some kind of punitive actions at this point isn't appropriate. We do meet for our first kickoff meeting with our new project manager on Friday. But there had been some talk to say that the actual letters-- and by the way, the letters have been written. It's just that the actual letters may not go out until November.
So what, we, as a select board, as I recall, said, "Okay, we're going to implement the ordinance in October, November," I can't remember. And we're going to give people a window of opportunity to get up and running until we pick April. It's August, and now it's November. So how does, what should the public know about when we're going to actually have a registry? Because the letters going out doesn't necessarily mean we're going to have a registry. When do you think, because I kind of want to set my expectations and everybody else's about what's a realistic expectation that Chester will have a short-term rental registry?
The intent is that when we're ready, and it may be November, that all of the short-term rentals will get a letter saying there is a form online for you to register, and you need to do that in the next month or something like that. There will, of course, we just have to be a grace period for those that just aren't able to meet all the requirements. But we, our expectation is they will register, and if there's missing documents, that we will--
So end of year, we'll have a registry?
Set up some sort of a period when they have to come in. I sure hope so.
On this, the Granicus--
You know, our contract with this company is for one year, so if they don't do it, there we are.
Right, but we paid them, right?
Well, that was going to be my question. Have we paid them the full amount or just a deposit?
I believe just a deposit.
We're somewhere around halfway of paying them.
Well, make sure we will not sign any warrants on the other half for, until we're satisfied. Because it's not working out, and they're not providing the service that they said they were. And hopefully, your meeting Friday with the new administrator would be productive and things happen because of it. And I just, when a specific person's assigned to a task, I would hope that it would come sooner than later than November even. Because the information's there, but if there's nothing attached to the ordinance that we have, it's one of those ordinances, why even have it if we're not going to be enforcing anything or doing anything with it? And also, when I look at some of these other options on it, I'm still a firm believer. I, whether this number is low, whether it's high, wherever this number is, I think that we should do more. Because if it changes and it starts going up, is that the time to do something? Or is it time to think about some of these other things now? Because five years ago, I don't even think there were any short-term rentals in Chester.
It was very helpful to read the list of what other towns are doing and where they are in their process, specifically Ludlow and Woodstock. I know Ludlow is working on this, and I know Woodstock has taken a little bit of action. I feel strongly that we need to continue to pay attention. It feels like we need to let Preston have the kickoff on Friday, see what Gatticus is actually going to do for us. But I want to make it clear, at least in my opinion, this is not something that we let go quietly. I think we need to continue to attend to. And I think, as Peter said, once the housing commission is in place, I feel like this belongs on their agenda as well. Does that?
No.
I just want to make it sure that if we're saying November and we're okay with that, we're still paying attention and collecting data and looking at the other towns because they're doing some things that seem appealing, not least of which is incentivizing, turn these into long-term rentals for workforce.
Well, it's going to be a board decision whether we do anything, whether we just stay with the registration, whether we add to it now or at a future date, whether we just keep our eyes on it, like you were saying. We're going to have to come to a consensus on what we want to do for--
Well--
in the future when it comes to this short-term rental issue.
Hopefully in the near future, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Pardon me?
Hopefully in the near future.
Well, and I was happy to read some of the other things that we can implement because I think we need to balance our concerns with the trend of staying all over the world in short-term rentals. And tourism is the second biggest economic driver for Vermont. So when we have homes that are second homes anyways being rented out to tourists to come here and we implement some things, I think there could be some unforeseen consequences that could hurt some businesses too. So I think we need to be measured, keep on top of it. But it's a trend that's way bigger than Chester, Vermont.
That's for sure. Mr. Bulkey, you had a question or a comment?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One thing I'd like to remind you all of is that one of the things that was going to happen for the unhosted ones was that they were going to have a local manager--
Right.
That you could call up, you know, when something was going on, because that's been an issue. And of course, Kathy's done an excellent job. You talked to eighteen towns? Fourteen towns in Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine. And you all might take a look at, another look at that, or maybe you can send that back out, at some of the stuff that's going on. And of course, in the paper, you know, Plymouth's doing quite a bit now, and a number of other towns are doing this. And I know that this is, and this is a tiny anecdote, but where I live on Meadow Road, on Orchid, right across the road from us, and then right around the corner on Church Street, there are three new owners. I've talked at great length with two of them who say that they're not going to turn them into rental units. They'll be, one of them, one of the new owners is staying there a lot. They, all three have other houses. Another is coming and going, but says, "No, we're not going to do that. We want it for ourselves." But the third is, I hadn't had a chance to do anything other than welcoming to the community. But the third, I knocked on the door the other day because there was some weather going-- Oh, Lover's Lane Brook was, you know, playing his games. So I was knocking on the door because it was a new car I didn't recognize just to make sure they understood what they were, what was going on. And this was a short-term rental. And so I understand that to say, "Well, one out of three recently purchased homes in part of Chester is now a short-term rental," with the owners hardly ever there. But there's your statistic, and that doesn't do you much good. But I think it matters.
It does matter.
Thank you. Part of the concern that I had when we were going over this is that we, you know, we struggled a little bit to even get the basic registration. And I know we've gotten that part of it, and it's had a slow opening, a slow, you know, start. It's going in the right direction, but I still come back to the same thought, that is, this is a business that we don't regulate. We do what everything else, everything else either has to be a permitted use or a conditional use, but we don't have anything that talks about short-term rentals in our zoning ordinances or our planning commission or any of that thing. We talk about motels, we talk about inns, we talk about a lot of other things, but we don't talk about short-term rentals. And I'm just wondering why, and I realize that there's arguments both ways as far as tourism and promotion and things like that, and what people can or can't do with their property, but why is it different for a short-term rental than it would be for any other business that wanted to start or form?
Well, the reason that the ordinance was proposed was because it's faster to change than zoning. If, I mean, you talk about how long it takes to change a zoning bylaw. I mean, an ordinance, we can change in 60 days.
Oh, yeah, that's our, yeah.
That's the advantage. And the other thing is, basically, we're a residential town. You know, there is really no industrial place that you'd have it. I think the ordinance, the ordinance that we have is a starting point that you need. The, until you can get to a point where you can have some enforcement, you know, we have a contractor failure, you know? And that's, I mean, I know what it's going to take, because, you know, I was in on the ordinance, I voted for the ordinance, I worked through the planning board. I know that for me, that this is probably going to cost me $30,000 to $40,000. The thing is, the people, when they get their letter in November, they're not even starting on that process yet. And once you, once the letter hits, then, because you haven't identified, the people who are going to be affected by the ordinance don't even know about it yet. That's our biggest issue.
Kathy? Hang on there.
My concern is not with short-term rentals, it's with unhosted short-term rentals. We don't need that for tourism. We have a motel, we have the Fullerton, we have several hosted short-term rentals. You don't need to have empty houses for tourists. And most of these that are coming up now are not being purchased by people who would have a seasonal house here. They wouldn't have a seasonal house here. They're buying this just for the purpose of making money by renting out rooms in a residential neighborhood. Case in point, across the street from us, and this will be the fourth in our neighborhood if it turns into a short-term, unhosted short-term rental, Bonnie in Blue Waters sold their house, third day on the market, third day it was listed, it was sold to somebody sight unseen in New Jersey. Now you tell me he's going to come here and live. Now maybe he isn't, it'd be wonderful, but the odds are really good that right across the street from us, we would have yet again another unhosted short-term rental. And the thing that really I find disturbing is that every time one of these houses goes to an unhosted short-term rental, it's one less house a family can move into. And whenever people from out of state who have, look at a house for, I think that was 289, that to them is a drop in the bucket. There's nothing down in their neighborhood, probably under 500. So they've seen this at the park, and they're going to be able to get $300, $400 a night. So why not do it? And they come up to check it, it's tax deductible. They spend a week there, it's tax deductible. Taxes go up here because you're going to hire firemen now, tax deductible. You and I'll be paying more taxes, but they can do it as tax-able. They don't care about our community except what they can take from it through getting in. We're going to lose our high school if fewer kids graduate than they did this year. What, 47 kids this year? Next year, if it's 40, then it's 35. How many years can we keep a high school going if the number keeps going down? They don't care, their kids aren't in school here. The Rotary can't do the things that they used to do because they don't have any new members, no young people moving into town. So, but they don't care, it doesn't affect them. They're there getting their money from the short-term rentals. And people do use these innocently, they don't realize that these short-term rentals can damage a community. I was recently informed that in Venice, Italy, they used to have a 70% full-time residential population. They now have a 30% full-time residential population. And when people from other areas come in and buy, our kids, I mean, I've heard of from several different people, their kid got a job in the area, they wanted to move back home, they couldn't do it because they could not find a place to live. If they're going to compete against New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts, New York money, they're never going to come. They can't do it, and the jobs are going wanting here. So there's a place where we can draw a line. And I talked again to Moorestown, this morning, Todd Thomas in Moorestown, I talked to him before, I called him again, and when we were talking, you thought you were being sued. So I called thinking I would ask how their lawsuit was going. They're not being sued, nobody has sued them.
Great.
He said, in fact, I would recommend that someone from the board talk to them. He's very informative, very easy to talk to. They just drew a line in the sand, they said, no more unhosted short-term rentals. If you have one now, you can keep it, but no more. And they put the word out, the realtors put the word out, don't come up here and buy a house and think you're going to turn it into an unhosted short-term rental, because it isn't going to happen. And it has worked for them. And that's what I feel Chester has to do. We can do all the registering and everything, but keep it for hosted short-term rentals. If someone has, and they can prove that if they actively have an unhosted short-term rental now, then fine, keep it. But when that house sells to somebody else, it's not a short-term rental anymore. And I think that's what the town really has to do. We have to draw a line in the sand and say, enough. You know, you want to come here and live and rent out, how do you part of your house? Wonderful. Or you want to come here and live? That's wonderful. But don't come buy our houses and turn them into little hotels, because that's what they are. And I know that the Vermont Supreme Court has said, if you own a home, you can rent it. Well, we're talking, that's a general statement, in that the implication is you're going to rent it for somebody to live in, not rent it by the night. How about if we rent it by the hour? Would that change it too? I mean, you have to, somewhere, you have to figure out the difference between renting a place by the night and renting it by the year. I'm really concerned about the house across the street from us. Chuck, I grew up up the road, I've only been in Chester nine years, but I grew up in Perkinsville. We didn't move back to Perkinsville, even though the house my parents built was available to buy at the time, and I really loved the house. But Perkinsville doesn't have a general store anymore, it doesn't have a post office anymore, it doesn't have a town office anymore, it barely has a church, I'm one of three members, there's no school, so there, as a place for us to grow older, it wasn't going to happen. We came to Chester, I've known Chester all my life, and it's a full, active community. And one of the things I love about Chester is that it has all the schools, elementary and high school. Wouldn't it be a shame if we lose our high school? And that is not an unrealistic concern. We really have to look at that. And when we lose the kids, we lose the young families, and we need the young families. We're getting to be an old town. I mean, seriously, if you look at, look at all of us. You're not as old as I am, you're not as old as I am, but anybody here in their 30s, you know? We've got to be able to bring young people into town. And right now, between the taxes and the cost of housing, it isn't going to happen. And it'd be great if we can get some affordable housing built, but why do we have to lose existing houses to people who don't give a damn about Chester, except what they can take from it? That's my concern.
Thank you, Kathy. Thanks for all your research and work that you have done on this topic also. You've been a wealth of information regarding towns and all the other things that are related to this topic. I'm sorry, Nadia, you'll be next.
Hi, I'm Lori Quinn, and I'm here to speak as a citizen, not as the wife of Hugh Quinn. And I know you're talking about giving notice to people that are short-term renting, and I do recall coming to multiple meetings when we're talking about the ordinance, and it was snowing out. I don't remember what month it was, but I know this conversation has been going on a long time. I know that owners have, are aware of this, that we had some owners here that were kind of fighting this. So I don't, I have no problem with you guys implementing this with the minimal amount of notice. I do want to disclose that I have, I live in a subdivision of four homes. The last one was sold last year, and we're really thrilled. The owners are retirees that are here at least half the year, and thus far, they're not renting it during the winter. At least this year, they did not. The other two owners are both short-term renting, so we are really experienced neighbors of what it's like to live in a community, a small community within our community, that has really changed drastically as far as our quality of life has gone. Couple of weekends ago, there was a great party going on next door, lots of dancing, super loud music. Three of us, you know, I went up, because our dog decided to join the party, Bodie's very party-oriented, and we have very elderly neighbors next door, and I said, I hope that you will be turning down your music at 10 o'clock, so I'm so sorry about Bodie coming to visit. And they're like, ah, yeah, yeah, yeah. I said, they're very old. And they said, oh, yeah, yeah, we're very old too, and they were in the same category. But it put me again in this situation I've been in multiple times, where I, as a neighbor, are being affected by people who are visiting. And granted, they're not evil people, they're like you and I, we've Airbnb, but they don't have the same kind of, they're not there for the same reason, they're not my customers, I'm not in tourism, I'm in healthcare, they're not, so they're not patronizing me, but yet, maybe they are some of my other community people, but there's a large number of people in our community that are not benefiting from that tourism side of it. And they come and they party, and some are very considerate, and then they go home. And we do not see people that own these homes more than maybe once or twice a year. And they used to be people that we sat around the campground, around our fire pit together, and had over for parties, and we're really trying to mend one relationship. It's been very difficult, because we are now on two different sides of this issue. We live a different experience than they do, but it has impacted us, it's impacted relationships, it's impacting our neighborhood. And yes, we're in a rural neighborhood, yet we're also in a really small subdivision neighborhood where we really value our quality of life, and that's why we chose to move here full-time. So I don't want, I know it's not a statistic that's hard to follow, but it is still a story. And I think for many people, that is driving regulation, monitoring, having a number that you can call where you're not the neighbor calling the owner, meeting with strangers. I think that's a really good thing, that's going to, something I've looked forward to for a long time. So I appreciate you guys looking at all the facts. I'm not the expert, Hugh knows the ins and outs, and I know Preston does too. It is a very complicated decision on all those things, whether you're having a lottery or not, in the state of Vermont, and their opinion, and their opinion of it as a business, and not, even in our subdivision agreement, we can't have a commercial entity, yet this does not fall under a commercial business. So we, even in our subdivision rules, which are pretty rigid, they do not, they do not fall into those guidelines that were written 15 years ago. So I know you'll think deeply about this, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
It's, I think it's important to hear the personal side of it, and to hear the neighbors that are affected and concerned about this, because what we do or don't do is going to make a big difference on a lot of neighborhoods and a lot of people's lives. I'll be heading right there, I think, Nadia, no?
I just wanted to say that.
Oh, you have to walk up to the mic and give us your name? Yeah, it's okay.
I'm very short.
That's fine. Just tell us your name.
Jan Woot, on North Street. I just wanted to say, look what happened to Ludlow. They've been bought out. There's hardly any Ludlow residents. It's a mess, and the school, no school, no high school. It's awful. I don't think they realize what's happening up there. It's sad. I hope we don't get to that.
Thank you, Chuck.
Hi, Ed Grossman, North Street. I'd just like to support what's already been said. We moved here about six years ago, and we really didn't know Chester. And when people asked us in the near future, how's it going in Chester? One of the things that we were so happy to say is that we had such a great neighbor, and such great neighbors, and we really felt part of the community. And I can speak to the houses around me. They were owned for almost half a century by one family, and for almost four decades by another family, and both are in transition. And in our neighborhood, about a third of the houses have sold since we've been here. Some are short-term rentals, unhosted and hosted. And what I would ask is to give a serious consideration to regulating the number of unhosted rentals. It affects the community, you don't know who your neighbors are, you look at who's crossing the street, and if it's a family you know, you can say, hey, be careful crossing the street, you kids, and when you're a short-term rental, I mean, you're not looking out for the kids in the neighborhood, you don't really contribute to the community in terms of getting involved with the community. So what I'm asking is to give serious consideration to regulating the number of unhosted or short-term rentals.
Thank you. There's.
Four men in yellow shirt.
Any kind of question? Sure.
My name is Robin Potter, I'm also on North Street. I just want to make a comment about a comment that was made earlier, that Vermont needs the tourism. Vermont has always had tourism, even before short-term, so I don't think that's going to go away. The other thing is, I don't know if you've taken any notice of all the streets, how many of them have collapsed because of the loom of water that came down all at once. And I think that's what we're going to see, we have a lot of short-term rentals, that people are just going to come and take all the homes away from people, young couples with three or four children that need to have them in a good school, that need to have them have memories of, the memories you probably all had if you grew up in Vermont. That's what I want for my grandchildren, that's how I want my daughter to come. We've always been in Vermont, and we'd like to stay the same. But if you don't, you know, there's a window, excuse me, I have a little bit of a heart problem. There's a window of time. If you just keep talking about, well, the next meeting, or, let's wait and see, let's see what this one has to say and that one, you've lost your window. You have to act, you have to be firm, you have to be, you have to know what it is that you want, you just can't keep having meetings. And that's what I'm asking you to do, is to remember that, there is a window, and if you miss it, you miss it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that has any comments or questions?
I'd like to make a comment, and it's more of a question than anything else, but part of the discussion has focused on the unhosted short-term rentals, and I'm tending to lean in the direction of limiting the number of unhosted short-term rentals. But the question I have is, how will that limitation affect current homeowners who are trying to sell? It would not maybe be able to sell or make the same amount of money on selling their home because it couldn't be? home because it couldn't be purchased for use as a short-term rental? You know, there's a lot of people, you know, if we look at the statistics, we have 84% or whatever the number is of unhosted, 89% of unhosted short-term rentals. And so the majority of the short-term rentals out there are unhosted. If we say we're not gonna allow that, those 89, that 89%, 57 out of 64 are still gonna be able to operate. So is that gonna make a significant difference at this point? Or do we have to go to a lottery system and say, we're only gonna allow 20 or 30 or 40? I'm just trying to think through the ramifications of any kind of limitation. I understand there's a problem. I understand that we are suffering from a dearth of affordable housing in our town. And I think one way of addressing that is to put a limit on unhosted short-term rentals. And the unhosted part, there's been a couple of stories told tonight that showed the need for a host, somebody who takes responsibility for the actions of their renters. It's not fair to the neighbors to have to be the police or to put themselves in an uncomfortable situation to deal with a problem that a host would be able to deal with. But on the other hand, I've said this many times before, I want us to be aware of what the unintended consequences might be of limiting any kind of rentals, whether it be unhosted or hosted. So those are my comments. Just wondering what the rest of the board thinks.
My thing is that we got an ordinance that, that kind of addresses that, that says if someone's annoying, there has to be a local manager. We don't have any of the local managers. No one's done that, you know, that you can refer to the town and that the police department knows who it is, you know. So that's, that is an answer to it. I mean, to limit, limit that, I have no problem limiting the number of unhosteds, but then you start thinking about the neighborhood and it's kind of like you want to think about a ratio and distance, you know. So, okay, so if you have, you know, what is it? Is the, you know, 10 frontage lot sizes between hosted people, you're gonna have to figure out what a number is. You're in a different, you know, different districts have different frontages, you know, how are you gonna push them apart? I really think we need to hear from the Housing Commission and we have to get our subcontractor to work, you know. You shouldn't have to be calling your neighbor. You should have the registration work, which was the whole point of it, you know. We did it in, well, we started working on it in January of last year.
The registration, I believe, was supposed to take effect April 1st, but it got kicked around because of what's going on. I, I still don't think that's gonna solve many of the problems that are hearing, that I'm hearing here from the neighbors and from neighborhoods and stuff. I think the big difference that's coming out for me is hosted and unhosted. Ariana?
I just wanted to build on previous comments. It, we have the ordinance, it's highly frustrating that it hasn't moved faster. I struggle with the concept of us coming up with another ordinance when we have yet to enact the one that we put in place in hopes of mitigating it. So my question is, who or what body is responsible for shepherding this ordinance into action? Is this Preston? Is this us? Is it the police? Who has responsibility for looking at this ordinance and saying, how are we doing? How's this working? Where do we go next?
The, the original ordinance was basically just registration. And, and how does that get enforced? I imagine it would be through the-
It hasn't been able to be enacted yet because we haven't got the data from Granicus. There was, there was a series here.
So I guess my next question is, we've discussed this. We've heard from our, from, from folks who have one-on-one experience with it. What is the next active step we take as a body to look at where we go next with this, with the existing ordinance? So is there a working session? Is it the housing group? Is it, how do we move this forward?
Hugh?
Well, I'll just add, you know, in terms of enactment of the existing ordinance, and Preston, jump in if you think differently. But my belief is Preston is leading the effort with the software vendor to implement what we contracted them to do. So he's effectively on the hook for getting it done. Preston, and if I'm wrong, jump in now, because I'm, just what I'm thinking, but you and Julie-
You are quite right.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions. One, A, I would like to invite myself to your Friday kickoff call, if that's possible. The two of you can talk to me later about that. I'd be curious to know what's happening and so that we have some presence in what that process is. Even if it's just as observers, that would be great. Once that kickoff starts, I guess we revisit this on a regular basis.
The kickoff is gonna help, and it's gonna help, but it still comes back in my mind that that's just the basic registration. It's not gonna stop anymore from coming. It's not gonna stop anymore purchases and turned into short-term rentals. And if there's any consensus of the board that there is a problem and we should limit it somehow, I think we should act sooner than later.
Okay, so-
The issue becomes, what Lee said, the unintended consequences of that. And no matter what we do, as far as ordinances go and regulations go and all the things that we enact, whether it's short-term rental or anything else, always has consequences that we're aware of. But a lot of times there are unintended ones and, or unknown ones. And yeah, I guess there's some things that might happen that we're not aware of, but I would rather act on something that I am aware of than worry about something that might happen down the line.
If I could just-
If I may, if I may weigh in, I, in terms of a cap, I think it's our same ordinance. I think we put a provision in it, you know, we amend it to say that once we reach a certain number of registrations, we're not gonna issue anymore. If that number is lower than the current number of registrations, that means we're in a lottery, which will probably be unpopular. But it could also be higher. It could be like 70. And so we reach a point that once we issued 70 permits, we tell people, sorry, until somebody else lets their permit lapse, you can't get one.
That will incentivize compliance.
Yeah, and just to pile on to what Preston said, one of the things that I've seen in another town out on the West Coast is they wanted to limit the total number of short-term rentals, whether it's hosted or unhosted. I'll go with unhosted. And so they set a cap and then they basically, and then they have a lottery. If you, if you're, if your name is chosen, you get a permit for, say, three years, you know, some amount of time. And once that time's up, you're back in the pool. So that gives, you know, an opportunity for somebody who doesn't have one to become one. And it doesn't give kind of everybody that already had one, you know, the ability to operate their short-term rental indefinitely. So it becomes, you say you only want 60, you have a process to give the 60 out. Those 60 last for a number of years, maybe a stagger it. And then the process just constantly is refreshing who gets the, you know, the right to do it. So that it's not-
Well, and percentage-wise, do we, is there any data with other communities that look at where the tipping point is? And you spoke of a window, but where is, you know, what's, what does 4% look like on the scale? And also, we need to look at how many of our, of those homes are second homes, you know, non-resident homes. That would be another statistic that would help us understand the full picture.
Well, I think you might be able to argue that if it's unhosted, it's not somebody's primary residence. So it's either a second home or an investment property or it's not where somebody lives.
So my question is relative to the whole registration thing, since that's how we started this whole process, is asking for registration. If we have 64 short-term rentals that we know about right now and only 50 of them register, is that the cap? Does that give us any information? Or do we set the cap and say, we're gonna allow 50 and that's it? And if we get more than that and you're the last one, then too bad for you. I guess I'm just trying to figure out how we set that number and whether we're, we're setting the number too high or too low or whatever. And that's why it's interesting, I don't know what Granicus, what else they're gonna give us, but I guess I'd wanna hear a little bit more after this Friday call to see if they have any more insight as to whether these are all active, all 64 are active listings or they've been out there for a while. Is that how it works?
No, no. They scan the listings multiple times a week.
Okay.
So you can look at the data in real time. And if it shows up, it's listed.
So if we, if we implement just the registration process and we say, you have 30 days to register your short-term rental and after that, you're out of luck. Is that, does that give us any information?
No, I think, Preston, you know, you can jump in, but I think the way the process will likely work, it's not a one-time registration process. It happens on an ongoing basis. There's the initial, hey, everybody get registered, because you saw all the red dots. But then basically on an ongoing basis, whether that's weekly or monthly or whatever it is, Preston is going to become aware of new properties that have been listed that are not registered. So when that happens, they will get a letter that says you own a short-term rental and you're listing it, so you gotta register. It's not something that happens once a year, every six months. It happens continuously.
So then in that case, setting a limit would be a way to limit, obviously, the number of short-term rentals that are out there?
You could, yeah, that would, that would effectively do it. I think the only question you, probably the select board has to wrestle with is, you know, the equity of who gets one and who doesn't.
Well, I think you have to think about it. It has to be more proportional because what you want to do is you don't want to break up the neighborhoods, you know. So if you sit there and you say, just, you know, you zoning district, you know, you're only gonna allow so much. In a district, you look at Stone Village, you're thinking that, you know, there's now gonna be four or five there. So characteristically, that's just totally out of proportion. So even if you just said, we're gonna limit that, but there's already five there, you're kind of made a problem for yourself anyway. You've created a neighborhood of, of the rentals. I think you gotta try, you have, we have to look at it more about how to do it proportionally. So it's like, I mean, you're talking, you know, Nick lives in a development, you know. Okay, so you know, proportionally per square mile or whatever, you know, you can only have one or two there. Somehow, just, just trying to name a number and say, we can't have any more there is not gonna break up the concentration of the neighborhood.
So is that a zoning issue? And how do we-
Keep it in an ordinance. You can use the zoning-
No, but I, but I mean, is, is that something that we use the zoning, the zones, the various areas of-
Oh, absolutely.
So how do we do that without opening ourselves up to a lawsuit?
I don't know. I have to work on it.
There's some-
I'm listening to what people are saying. I'm trying to figure out kind of a solution that a proportionally spread them out.
No, and I like the idea, Peter. I think that's a great idea because North Street being a good example.
Right.
You know, if you have, I don't know how many houses are on North Street, 20, 30, maybe, but, okay, so if you have 10% or whatever, or, yeah, 20%. I mean, there's, that's a significant impact on that neighborhood.
Right.
Kathy, you're gonna have to come to the microphone if you're gonna speak. Thank you.
Well, the Waters house just sold, okay. And we're hoping people move there, but I won't be surprised. The Curran's house, so this is on both sides of Ed and Joan. On one side was the Waters, on the other side the Curran's. The Curran's moved out about a month ago and their house is gonna come on the market. So is somebody gonna buy that and move in? I mean, these are prime unhosted short-term rental properties, the stone houses. How nice to rent, you know, put it on the web. Here's this nice quaint stone house. Come in, spend $500 a night and ruin the neighborhood. But that's what we're really worried about. There's, you know, we've got two houses right now that aren't for grabs. And that's, plus the Ferentz house, plus the mill, plus across the street from the mill.
So let me ask you this question, sorry. So the Waters just sold their house. If we had a limit on how many short-term rentals there could be and somebody came and said, I'll give you $285,000 for your house, but we're gonna turn it into a short-term rental. And they said, sorry, you can't do that. They've just lost that sale. So does that mean, well, hold on a second. So, so the next thing is somebody from in town wants to buy it. They can't afford $285,000. So does that mean the Waters have to sit there, living in that house or paying for that house? Because we have some regulation in place that limits who can buy it? And is that, can we even do that?
Well, I think that 10 years ago, people put a price on the house that they knew would work. Right now, the prices are going up because people are anticipating money coming from New Jersey, Massachusetts, New York, Connecticut. Prices are going up on these houses. They're asking more for these houses now than they would ask if it wasn't-
Oh, yeah, sure. And that's because they know they can get it. And, and that's my point is, would we expect somebody like the Waters to say, well, I don't want $285,000. I want to sell it to the guy down the street for 150. You know, that doesn't make any economic sense to anybody, but that's really what we're kind of asking them to do.
I think that if short-term, unhosted short-term rental houses were eliminated or stock rate where they're at, the market would settle down. And yes, they wouldn't get as much money for their house, but we would still keep our community.
No, I-
They lose somewhere.
Right.
If they get more money for their house, we lose the community. Or we work to keep the community and people get a little bit less for the house. Maybe it takes a month to sell it instead of three days.
Right. No, I, I understand the whole aspect of it and it's a very complicated situation. And I, I don't claim to have any answers, but I'm just trying to think through the ramifications for everybody, whether it's the Waters or the people from New Jersey that just bought their house, or you as a neighbor. You know, how do we make this all work in a way that's fair and equitable to everybody?
And I'd like- My husband to buy it. No, seriously, I'd like my husband to buy it.
So he's sitting right there.
And then rent it, and rent it to my kids?
And sell it, but I'm in the deep that it could never be an unhosted short-term rental.
Yes.
And I could not convince him to do that.
Go ahead.
There's other things. I, I don't know if it was Preston that got the short-term rental regulation options landscape, this one. I really like it. And I think we can put limits, but we can also do other things. And the owner limit, limit the number of short-term, oh, sorry, that's the next one. The daily limit, a day limit. So you can have a short-term rental, but you have to max out X amount of days per year, right? I mean, that decentivizes buying a place and never being a part of the community, never coming up on every other weekend. So that's something that I don't think we're gonna get a lawsuit on that one. So if we went through these lists, this list at another time perhaps where we just have a meeting about this, that could be really useful. And it would discourage investors and, you know, and it wouldn't, the, the current homeowners that are second homeowners that come up here a lot and are part of the community, I think, because I know a lot, and spend, a lot of them, and spend a lot of money at our businesses, but who want to rent it out for, I'm randomly saying something, six weeks, eight weeks a year, you know, do we really, that would constrain some people from buying a house and never being there and never being a part of the community. So I'm not, and, and when, Hugh, when you first presented this to us in the fall, or, I don't know when it snowed last year. Ah, I believe you, but, but we talked about a crawl, walk, run, right? And I wish the crawl was a little faster because I really wish this was up and running, but it's not. So let's, I think we should get the information on Friday. I think Preston will do a great job of getting an idea of where we're at and what we can expect. And then I think we should look at our ordinance again, review exactly, because I haven't seen our ordinance since we approved it. And then we should look at some of these other strategies that maybe aren't running to, you know, we're gonna only have 4%. Is 4% the number we want? Is 6% the number we want? Do we want 1% per area of town? I don't know the right answer, but I really would prefer- prefer to have, to implement some more things that could stall the growth of these, but maybe not limit it until we understand the housing and understand things a bit better.
And what it comes down to is the details in any type of enforcement like this, and how we're going to address the issues that are important to us, and what we want to accomplish, without the unintended consequences that it might be scary, or it might be detrimental to the town also. That's the hard part. It seems like we all agree that doing nothing is not the answer.
Right.
What to do is a hard question.
But I don't think we can implement this other stuff until the Friday meeting, and the registration is even up going, because we want the registration. We want to know how many people they are. How many are, I mean, we know some things, but we want people to register.
We do.
And that's the first step, no matter what.
But it also seems like we want to do something else, no matter what happens with that registration.
I'm open to doing, I'm open to doing more.
Yep. And this list has quite a few different ways to accomplish different things.
And the other one, the waiting period, I really like this one. So I don't know what the waiting period should be, but, okay, you buy a house in our community, and you have to own it for a year, two years, three years, before you can apply for a short-term rental. I mean, there's a lot of things that are more nuanced than just putting a cap, which we don't even know what the cap should be. That's my feeling.
In Springfield, right now, for a short-term rental, anywhere in the town of Springfield, it is a conditional use, and has to go through the DRB, with all the hearings, and all the neighbors aware of it, signing letters, having, you have to have approval of your neighbors to do it and stuff. They're pretty happy the way it works there.
Well, maybe we can-
What happens is, the neighborhood that's around there has a big input of what's happening. And then you could look at and say, "Well, there's three or four of them already here. We don't need any more." Or this is the reason, or that's the reason.
But then we can expand this list, Arnie.
What's that?
We can expand this list of how we can do it.
And I'm just throwing these ideas and things out there, because there's a lot to digest and to try to figure out, because you want to get it right. I mean, whatever that is, I mean, in our minds, to do the right thing. But what is that thing is a whole different thing. For me, I'm more towards the DRB and conditional use for every single one of them. And then you could address any issues that come up when it goes along that way. And maybe it makes a lot of work in the beginning, but once they're established, and they're in the process, and they're done, then it becomes a process that you're clear about on how it works, and how to get there. And then you have a little more leeway also, because the DRB could turn around and give, "Oh, here's the conditions for your DRB. You can't have this. You can't do this," or whatever might be the concern of the neighbor or the neighborhood that it's in. Just throwing it out there as another option, because there's a lot of options on here.
And it's on there. It's under zoning.
Is it under zoning?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, conditional use, yeah. Thank you. There's a lot here.
There's a lot here.
Friday, it seems like something's going to be happening with Granicus, which is a positive thing. The registration hopefully will be going forward, and we'll at least start that part of it. It seems like we need, and I know you're not going to like hearing this, we need a little more time to really figure this out. I mean, it's not something we're going to turn around today and say, "Bang, we're going to put a limit. We're going to do this, and do that, and we're going to solve everything." I wish it was that easy, but it's not. There's a lot to consider and a lot to do. Sir?
Chuck or Tito. Listening to all this, I think you've got the mechanism in place, and that's the registration. Granted, we haven't had 100% people registering their short-term rental, whether hosted or unhosted. Whatever number of unhosted have not registered, give them a window. If this was made known in April, I don't know if it was published in the paper. I don't know if it was published online. Perhaps we ought to do that. And give them 30 days or 60 days to come forward and register. And there's the number for unhosted short-term rentals. And I think going to the review board for conditional use is an excellent tool. The neighbors will get to come in. The town will get to come in. And I think most important, a few of these simple things, it keeps the liability away from the town.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Where does all the ordinances and whatever you were going to put in place happen? Because when my husband and I were buying our home, no one, one, told us that there were Airbnbs in our neighborhood, which I think we would have wanted to know. Two, they never told us if there was anything that we were supposed to do if we were going to rent it out. We had no information. So when does the Realtors get involved with this? Because I think, as people coming to buy homes, for whatever reason, you should have all that information, and on a town basis. So that's another thing I think you should consider, is maybe talking with the Realtor. I don't know what the Housing Commission does. Maybe that's part of their job. But I think you have to start with the people who are going to buy the houses, with the Realtors. I think they have to be involved, and they have to know, we are saturated with short-term rentals. This is what we want. I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, sharing the information with the Realtors and real estate would be an excellent idea, once we're on that path, that we even have the information, and have a process that we're going to go forward with. Until we have a definite process, there's not much to share, other than, hey, you might have to rent, you might have to register your short-term rental.
Mr. President's comment about consequences, because then you're hitting somebody below the belt, because they didn't know about all the ordinances, and the expense that's going to be put in place. So to be fair to them, they should know that. To be fair to the community, we should be protective against-
I agree.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I think I'm in agreement with, or we're all in agreement, that we wait till Friday, see what comes of that, and then have a discussion in our next meeting.
Yes. Is that okay with the board, consensus of the board? We'll have that meeting Friday. And Ariana, you said you might want to-
Yes, I would very much like to join if it's appropriate.
Yeah, it's fine.
I'll let Preston and Julie let me know.
Well, even if three members wanted to join in with you too, that's fine. We just have to make sure if we do that, we warrant it, but one or two for sure.
Great.
What time's the meeting, Preston? Oh, you're on mute. You're on mute.
I've got grandchildren in the background. No, it's 11 to 12 on Friday.
Thank you.
And I will circulate that information. No, it's perfectly appropriate. In fact, I welcome the support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Preston. Hugh, thanks for being here, and with the questions. And I appreciate all the citizens that came out to speak, and I know this has been a long process. It'll be on our next agenda also. And we'll be discussing it again for sure. Thank you. Next item is errors and omissions. This is towards the, what, appraisals, I think it is?
This is an error, a breakage on a transfer, for, yeah, for a lister value.
So is that a motion item, or that's just a-
You have to sign this error.
Just the paperwork?
Yep.
Sorry, did you say?
No.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There you go.
Stretch your legs a little. was it, July 10th or 12th?
It's been a whole series of days. It's not just one.
It's never-ending.
It's not just one day.
Julie, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do we need a new grader? Or another grader? There's one for sale in Dublin, just been driving by it every day this week.
We're good at the moment.
Do we have two?
We have two. I think one is-
One's not the-
You got to have the operator for the second one. Right now, everybody's kind of at max capacity.
So Julie, can you share us the information on the update?
I can. So the town is getting put back together. We are now working on final repair. We are classified in recovery phase at this point. Emergent work is closed out with FEMA. We are, you know, a lot of time being spent out in Smokeshire, rebuilding the tail end of Smokeshire. But we're getting there. Most roads are coming to a close, as far as recovery is concerned. We did, FEMA has finally put real boots on the ground. They've been floating around for the past few weeks. But we have had our first briefings with them, applicant briefings with them. I attended one on Zoom on Monday, and then I went to Springfield to our regional one on Tuesday. So we have officially submitted our request for public assistance with FEMA, which is something that we're required to do. In about three weeks, we will be contacted and assigned our local project manager that I will be working with. And it's a very similar process to what we went through during Irene. There's some logistics that are different, but for the most part, the base is the same. So they will come, they will meet with Kirby and myself. We'll have what they can now call the recovery scoping meeting, where we just talk about the damages, and then we talk about what is remaining. So if we have culverts that we want to upsize, if we have bridge that, yeah, it's passable, but, you know, we really need to do some abutment work, or whatever, those things are still to be done. So those all get identified at that point. That is what starts the clicking, the ticking time clock. At that point, we have 60 days to create our damage inventory, which I pretty much already have done. I still have the templates from Irene, so I've started already filling that in. So we have 60 days to identify every project. And then we start the work. As far as, you have to build infamous portals. You have to build each project, and that's where we put in the actual costs of what it was to recover from the damage in that particular area. Right now, we have, if we classify them all, we probably have about 82 projects, which is a little less than Irene. We do not, does not look like, with the reservoir dam excluded, it does not look like we will have any projects that are classified as large projects, which for the state is over $250,000, for FEMA is over $1 million. We won't classify into any of those, which is good for us. It makes our process much simpler. It makes our recovery of funds much simpler. So that's good for us. FEMA's federal share, for the financial aspect of this, FEMA's federal share is 75%, which leaves 25% on the town. Now, one thing that the state put into effect during Irene was the ERAF, again, another acronym, I don't know what it stands for, something funding. Religions to relief and something funding. Anyway, depending on the levels of hazard mitigation and resiliency work that you do, so you get points if you have road and bridge standards that are compliant with the state. If you have a hazard mitigation plan, you get points. And so we need enough points that we will get from the state 12.5% of that 25% reimbursed. So what Chester will be on the hook for is 12.5% of our damages. That doesn't necessarily mean that we will be outlaying 12.5% of our cash, because when we develop our projects, there's a lot that we submit for reimbursement. So all of my time is reimbursable. All of our labor, overtime rates with benefits are reimbursable. FEMA has cost codes for equipment, all of our fuel. As long as we keep track and we document, that is all money that comes back in to the town through these projects. And it's money, as far as straight time, it's money that's already built into your budget, anyway. So it gives you some flexibility and some leeway. In Irene, we actually, the town was out nothing. We actually ended up making like $75,000 on it, which is a whole nother issue I had a problem with, because of federal tax dollars, but whatever. But the point is, at the end of the day, Irene did not affect our immediate budget. So I am hopeful that this will be the same process. But we'll know more about that as we really get building the projects, and find out what's going to be eligible. And we're pretty certain all of our work will be eligible.
It affects our town in other ways, though.
Oh, absolutely.
They can't do a lot of other things that they should be doing.
Oh, absolutely. No, absolutely.
So even though we might be reimbursed for the work that they're doing for the storm, a lot of things get put on the background.
Correct. It just will not have a negative impact on the budget.
Financial part of it, yeah.
On the budget part, hopefully. I will say, and use the opportunity to talk about river debris. It's what I'm fielding the most calls on. The state, there's a lot of messages coming out on river debris. Mixed messages coming out on river debris. Rivers' management teams are giving permissions to remove trees and gravel berms in the river. Unfortunately, FEMA, it's not a cost code that FEMA will reimburse for. So it's tempting to send contractors into the rivers to do all that removal. If we do that with the amount that we have in town, we will be well into six figures. That is not reimbursable to the town. So one of the things that we are, and there's a lot of mixed messages. Rivers engineers are giving permits to remove, but you have the State of Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, who goes on public television and says, "Nobody's allowed in the river." So there's a lot of, things are not clear at the state level between the state and FEMA. We are not doing debris removal from the river at this time, until things have gotten figured out. We definitely want that gravel. We want those gravel berms, because we want them back in our pit, if nothing else. And we want those trees out, because we don't want clogged bridges down the road. And we have permission to do it. It's just a matter of the funding, and how are we going to get it done? When our plan of attack, I've talked to V-Trans, I've talked to our stream alteration engineer, when our FEMA person is in town, and we go look at project sites, we are going to form a team, us, Scott Jensen, Mark Pickering, will all form a team with that FEMA person, go to these sites, and really fight for, "We have to have this done, because that piece of infrastructure is going to go." And we're hoping that we can fight enough, and with the support of A and R and V-Trans, that maybe we can get FEMA to sign off on some of these projects. It's a big if, and we're not going to expend contractor funds at this time until that's clear. And I know that's not what people want to hear. People see gravel berms in their backyard, and they want them out now. That's just not going to happen at this time. After Irene, it was a couple of months before any of that type of work was even allowed to begin. So unfortunately, you know, it's a, it's just kind of a sit and wait on that level of work. So I just want people, I want to be upfront with people about that stuff.
Is that, is that going to go into river mediation, or mitigation, and moving things, or bolstering things for some neighborhoods?
So when you're talking about bank stabilization on the back of somebody's property, that is not the work that the town of Chester does. That is private property work. We cannot do any work on private property. So the town cannot come stabilize your bank. What happened after Irene, and I would, I'm hoping that it will happen after this event as well, the state put in a program, an RCS, a Natural Resources Conservation Service, put a program together, that provided funding, in many cases, 100% funding, to property owners that got special permission. So a building was going to be threatened, you know, some kind of a structure issue. They were giving 100% funding for hiring a local contractor to do bank stabilization work. That may come. We haven't heard that yet. And again, that was a couple months after the event. So that money does not flow quick, that those programs don't get instituted quickly. So that, that money does not flow quick, that those programs don't get instituted quickly. It takes a while. And the state, as far as the IA, the individual assistance portion of FEMA, there's a lot of those, that data that's still being gathered. So public assistance wise, municipalities, we have reached the threshold for FEMA to come in with funding for all counties except for three. The individual assistance side, not all counties have reached the threshold. And as of right now, I don't know that Windsor has. As of what I heard, briefly what I heard on Monday, or Tuesday, Tuesday, yesterday. So there's, there's a lot of unknowns there about what is going to come out. Until those thresholds have been met, none of that other state funding gets released. So it's not the greatest of news, but on the individual assistance side.
And it was like this during the Irene. The process is a lot longer than, than people to think or anticipate because it's, there's so much work. And then when the federal government gets involved with the state government, there's a lot of hoops to jump through and a lot of things that you have to follow to make sure, to make sure we get reimbursement. And Julie's experienced it. This, this is her second storm. So we're lucky to have someone that really has a handle on what's happening. And I just want to give a shout out to our crew on the Town Highway Department too. They're finally getting a small break where they could take a vacation and back to eight hours a day, but they were straight out for the longest time. And along with all the other contractors that were working in town, 12, eight, 10, 12 hours a day on the roads and helping to get the town back to where it is, which is still nowhere near where it should be, but we're in the right direction. It's just, it was devastating. And maybe it's not, wasn't quite as bad as Irene in some ways. In some ways, it seemed even worse. And I got a feeling that it's a hundred year storm is going to be more like every five years. But, yeah, who knows?
For an update on the dam, just so everybody knows. So the latest that we have is the structural engineers from the dam safety division came down a couple of times. And the, it was the earthen part of the dam that was damaged. They do not feel that the concrete structure that is in the ground suffered any significant damage. Our spillway is dramatically undersized. The whole dam itself is undersized and we've known this for years. This is not new. It's just extremely expensive. So it's been one of those projects that for my 19 years has always gotten kind of just pushed down the road. It's one of those. I am, I am sure that FEMA will cover a portion, but they certainly are not going to cover the expense of us upsizing our dam. So we will be looking at other funding. What is happening right now is Naomi, who has all of the reports, is compiling them and kind of writing up a plan. At that point, we will go out to bid. She's going to help me write up a scope of work for the project and then we will go out to bid for engineering. That really should be our next step to find out what, what is the full scope of this project? What needs to be done? How do we do this? It will also involve, I've asked her to look at culvert sizes all the way down Reservoir Road. We did have a large tube replaced with a box culvert after Irene. But the stone culvert right there on Water Farm Road by the reservoir failed. It's not big enough to handle if water comes over the top of the, top of the dam. And then the two tubes at the very end of Boltz Road failed. So those clearly need to be upsized. So whatever program is being put into place for recovery of the dam, we also need to look at all of the culverts down the road that can take it if it overflows. So it's a bigger project than just let's increase the size of the spillway. There's a lot more to look at. So the first phase, we'll be going out for bids for engineer, which I think that we should do. And I'm going to argue with FEMA to at least to help us pay for that part. Get some designs and then put a plan in place. Maybe there are ways, and it was suggested to me by one of the structural engineers that came from FEMA that said, you know, there may be way to, there may be ways to phase in these improvements, which would be great because then we could seek different levels of funding and start looking at some grants to, to get some work done. So that's kind of phase one. We're going to be developing a scope of work to go out to bid for engineering for the project.
So I just got to back this up a little bit. What is the actual function of the dam?
At this point, so the reservoir was initially, I think years and years ago, it was a backup water supply. It's not anymore. Now it is really heavily used as recreation.
Well, the question is, is as recreation, if we're going to make a million dollar project out of recreation, maybe the way to approach this is to take the dam out.
To take what?
Take the dam out. If all you're using, it doesn't, if it does, if its only function is that it's, that it's doing recreation, it's not doing flood mitigation, it's not part of the water system, then if we're spending a million dollars for some people to go fish, I think we have to take a serious look at, do you just remove the dam?
And we certainly can, but I, I don't know with any form of confidence that we're talking about a million dollar project.
The budget that you have in here, you are looking at 800,000?
Perhaps, if we do, but, but we don't have, that's not engineered, Peter. I think you need to get a cost analysis to find out, first of all, what these costs even are.
Cost benefit analysis.
Correct.
Right, which is more than the engineer. It's like, you're going to pay this much for this many people to have recreation. It doesn't make sense to fix the dam.
And we could certainly include that in part of your scope.
That would be a separate discussion altogether. But one of the engineers that I was speaking to on the day it was up there, a properly operating dam is a flood control item where they could lower the level four or five feet before a big storm and it would serve a purpose. So it can be a combination of both. But that's a whole different discussion about when it comes to spending that money, whether we spend it or don't spend it, or whether some other ideas are taken into consideration. But that's something that could be discussed another time.
But I'm really happy how with floods we can learn and then go back and make our infrastructure stronger for the next storm.
That, that stone culvert has been replaced.
Yes, they have a new tube, but it's temporary. It's, it's going to have to be upsized, but it's in.
Well, it's upsized.
Yeah, well, it's going to be upsized more than that. We're probably looking at a box.
At the top of the row.
Yeah, I know it is. Yeah, yeah, they got that done. But yes, Peter, I agree. So maybe that's part of when we build the scope to go out for engineering, that that's one of the things we ask them to look at. Is, is, you know, put a BCA in there and see. Then there's discussion, you know, for the select board to decide is this, you know, or for the community. It's a huge community thing.
It's a communicative conversation.
Yeah, $800 toward a rec center, $800,000 toward a rec center that could be a refuge. You know?
Absolutely, yep, yep. So I'll include, I'll have them include a BCA in that scope. So then you kind of have everything you need to make that decision.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. Earlier this week, I think it was yesterday, maybe today, the legislature approved a grant that's going to be funded through Efficiency Vermont for $10,000 to renters and homeowners for appliances and heating equipment that were damaged. And there are some income qualifications, but if people have lost hot water heaters, boilers, you know, all that kind of stuff, and also appliances, there's this program that's being stood up probably sometime this week, early next week by Efficiency Vermont. It's not going to make everyone perfect, but it could help. So I wanted, I just wanted to let everyone know because I think they're having a hard time getting some of these programs, the words out about it, so.
And there was a lot of people affected that way. Where the basements flooded and that's where all your equipment is and your mechanicals usually.
Well, and I think there's more information to come, but I do know it's Efficiency Vermont that's going to be standing it up and getting the money out.
Any other comments or questions? Julie, thanks for all the work and was last week you were on vacation, I guess, wasn't it?
I was on vacation and worked 75 hours. I'm not really sure how that works, but yeah, I worked them all, let's put it that way.
I meant that.
Yes, no, I know.
Back to you, Julie, with a financial update on our general fund. We're at the half year mark.
We are at the half year mark.
How are we looking?
We are looking good. It's still, you know, at, with our budget being January to December and tax billing taking place in September. Second quarter doesn't tell us a whole lot either when it comes to overall fund balance and those types of conversations. But we are holding fairly well. Revenues are trailing a bit, but expenses are also down. So we're, we're balanced at this point. Ambulance is the one department that is over budget, but we kind of knew that that was going to end up happening. With Mike now certified as an A, we are able to run pretty much all calls at an advanced EMT level, which allows us to bill at a much higher rate as well. So we'll start seeing some pickup in ambulance revenue that will hopefully throughout the rest of the year, we'll, we'll balance that. That's the only department that, you know, could have some concern at the end of the year, but we'll watch that closely and see, see where that trails. But other than that, I mean, for second quarter, we're, we're holding.
How are the discussions you were talking about, the discussions with Springfield Hospital?
Yep.
Is that kind of just, you know, who, is someone, is that continuing on or is that kind of lost in the flood?
Well, definitely was lost in the flood, but prior to the flood. Yes, they are still continuing those conversations. It comes back to the Springfield Board, needs to have their internal conversations about it. Mike and Tom have also been meeting with, we have now been assigned a, I forget what they call them, but there is a, basically a clinical person that is assigned to our town. We are sharing them. I understand we are sharing them with Bell's Falls, but we now have somebody we can contact. You know, when the guys are out on a call and it's a mental health call, we do have somebody we can connect with and somebody that will follow up the next day. So that is fairly new. I haven't had time to reconnect with the guys to see how it's actually working. But that was fairly new and started in mid to late June. We're going to kind of evaluate that process. And then if we need to step up to the next level, which is we fund somebody for so many hours a week, we actually, you know, have somebody dedicated to the town. If we feel we need to go to that next level, then, then it's available to us to do that.
No, I'm back to the discussion with the ambulance with Springfield Hospital. Remember you were talking about that possibly.
The community health stuff?
Yeah.
That conversation is still, is still ongoing. Couple hurdles. Mike needed to become an A. We need to get our second A hired. We do have applicants that we will be interviewing, starting, I think it's next Thursday. So we do have three applicants for that position. So those two hurdles have to be overcome first. But Springfield Hospital is very interested. But again, we're having the conversations about funding. So they need to look internally to say, what levels of this are you funding? So that we know what's left for us to fund. And, but we have to start with, they want to make sure we're going to have two advanced EMTs that can actually handle what it is we want to do. So the conversations are coming. Mike is, is now a certified A. He passed his test. Hopefully we'll have somebody hired in the next couple of weeks. So it is, it's ongoing. It's, but we are working on it.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? Well, I see you got yourself to the front. You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. In your packet, I believe you probably have a copy of the balance sheet.
For general fund, Bill? You're talking general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the general fund balance sheet. And item one says general fund. Would that be your general fund cash position? Underneath says petty cash, so I'm assuming that, that actually is cash.
It's an asset, so probably at the June 30, that was cash on hand. That would make sense. Yep, yep.
In addition to that, I understand from the last couple of years, we changed method of accounting and we do a fund balance accounting system, which was a good idea because it takes the funds that you've allocated to different places and they're able to use rather than borrowing money. Accounting wise bothers me because it depends on the person in the seat. And obviously, person in the seat has done a very good job. That position is also going to be replaced. So your consciousness in hiring somebody to fill that spot, to do the daily paperwork and follow the funds is a very critical, critical issue. I bring this up from years of experience with the blood when our cash position was not as good as it should have been. Not a fun thing to say, but that was a fact. And the town has seemed to work through that issue. And as we see, we do have cash positions here now. One of the things I did notice in the balance sheet, however, is that our tax anticipation note, you have to excuse me a minute, but we went from, in 2022, we went from 500,000 to 2023, which we borrowed 900,000. Anything that gets close to a million dollars makes me a very nervous person. We had been in the past in that position where we were borrowing that type of money and the accounting system and the utilization of proper looking at our cash reduced that number substantially. I do look at the, on the liability side, it shows our fund balance for '22 was a million 157. And, and I know you don't have it all written out as I do. But this year was a million six, which was an increase of about 500,000 in the fund balance. So I guess my question is, if you probably can answer me, but I wish it's something the board would think about, is that you really should pay good attention to your fund balance. And all members should have some idea where you are on a monthly basis or at least a quarterly basis, what the fund balance is. Because the utilization of the fund balance would decrease your borrow. And we know the interest rates are just wonderful these days. Whatever you have to borrow is definitely going to be money that you can't spend in some other category. That's the only common knowledge to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
There was a reason for the increase in the TAN note, wasn't there?
So the TAN note, we have always borrowed close to 800, 900,000 dollars. We had a couple of years primarily with COVID, where we had the large amount of money come in. And that's been sitting and we've been able to draw from that for our cash flow. So that, for, we had about three to four years, not just COVID. We also had Papa Dungeon Bridge Project. We had the Public Safety Building Project where what we were able to do was play a little bit of a cash game in that we would have a bill for the construction, $300,000 invoice. I would requisition that from the bond. We'd get 300,000 in, but I didn't have to pay that bill for 30 days. So I had 30 days of $300,000 that we got to use to float our cash until we paid. So there's a little bit of a game we were able to play. We can do that and the auditors are comfortable with us doing that because we have really good accounting systems, right? If we didn't, we would not want to play that game. But it allowed us to, to be able to not have large TANs for a handful of years. And then we had the COVID money that came in, the 900,000 that was sitting. We've now started to spend some of that because we, we put, you know, an extra almost 300,000 to cover the cost overruns of the Public Safety Building because it was built during COVID time. So the reserves are lower. So we're getting back up to what the TANs have historically always been. Yeah.
It's a matter of cash flow.
It's a matter of cash flow. We are, the town is on a January to December year. We do not bill our taxes until September. So we have, we have a good seven months. Our bills go out in July, due September 15th. So you've got a good seven months where we have to run the town on just what's in stock. So what, one thing that has changed though, is that we're getting our TAN later. We used to get that TAN right off the bat in January. We're not doing that now. We're into the second quarter typically when we get that TAN. And that change has come because of how we are paying the schools. We are not making the school whole on December 31st like we used to. There is, there is a provision in statute that we are taking advantage of. We started this a couple of years ago. We have to make the school whole by June 30, which is the end of their year. Each month after December 31st, we pay them the percentage of, their percentage of what we have collected that month. So otherwise what, and we make them whole June 30. Otherwise, what was happening is on December 31st, we're cutting a check to make them whole and most of that is taxes that haven't been collected to date. So we're left holding the bag on delinquent taxes while the school is whole. So we changed the way we do that. So that has also dramatically helped our cash flow as well, so.
Which, which comes to the point that Bill mentioned, that the person that we that the person that we hire for this position is going to have to be very well.
So I will, I will go ahead and tell you. We have had five interviews. We had five very strong candidates. Debbie Sill and I interviewed five. We narrowed it down to two. We had our second round of interviews today, where Ron, our auditor, attended and actually conducted the second interview to kind of get his perspective. I can't announce it, but we are beyond excited about an applicant that we feel extremely comfortable with. She will probably be looking to hire her. I always like to sleep on it, so probably tomorrow or Friday. But we will be in very good hands with who we have. And Sill is not going very far. So one of the things that we are doing is, because I'm very needy in the financial world, because it's not my background, and the amount of stuff that we have going through this town, in our little tiny town, there is a lot. We have grants, bonds, a lot of federal funds. A lot of federal funds come through us. So it's more than, it's a job for more than one person. And there's a lot more we could do of really cool stuff. So Sill is going to stay on part-time. She is going to be our payroll AP clerk, which will require her to just basically work, you know, maybe 10 hours a week at the most. So she will be semi-retired doing that function. New person will come in. They're kind of going to be our staff accountant, kind of finance manager. And then we still have Sill there for a while to kind of oversee and have a really good lengthy transition.
I just wanted, one of the things that I was thinking about earlier when you were talking about FEMA and percentages, and as part of this conversation, and thank you for your comments, one of the things that did occur to me is with those kind of percentages and us being paid back reimbursed or things being paid as a direct result of that accounting, which is outside of our regular operation as a town, I'm assuming this new person is either jumping right into having to do emergency accounting or is that something that's staying with Sill through this crisis? Like, I'm not questioning you. I'm just curious how that adds to the weekly function of accounting for the town and also it being a time of transition feels rough.
Sure. So first of all, I will tell you that there is a separate fund opened up. So none of the expenses of the flood will run through the general fund.
Thank you.
Number one. That's, that's number one. We did that during Irene, too. Everything is much easily, more easily tracked, obviously, when it's in a separate.
Just that statement alone relieves some of my concerns.
Exactly, exactly. And so the actual accounting of the damages is actually done at my desk.
That's what I'm.
So those spreadsheets and all of that is done with me because I am the one who's ultimately responsible to report. So, and I'm the one that's experienced in it. So I, that all happens with me. What transitions between me and Sill or this new person, it probably will be all three of us, I would say, will be, this is the amount that you can expect to be coming in. It should offset these expenses in whatever department and whatever road. And then they make, they make those inputs and journal entries and all of those types of things. So it's a three-way team and both Sill and I are still here.
Great.
Any other questions? Thanks for that update.
You're welcome.
Before we go on to new business, I think we have a cemetery deal?
Yes.
New business, future agenda items. I guess we have a grievance, union grievance hearing on September 16, the housing committee appointment because of the resignation. I think she's moving out of town.
No, that's the citizens advisory.
Oh, okay.
The housing committee, I'm hoping you guys will have interviews.
Oh, okay, the appointment, okay, for that, yeah.
I was hoping for that to have been in August, but we had a flood. We glad it happened.
And there's a traffic ordinance.
Hopefully, yeah.
Citizens Advisory Committee appointment and a town manager retirement plan.
Do you want me to give you a quick update?
I would think so.
You're not retiring, right?
Huh?
You're not retiring, right?
Oh, my God, no. I'm only 50. I have, I have a lot of time left. No, currently, I'll just tell you all right now. So it's really no big deal. Currently, my contract is 8% towards a retirement plan. We are with VEMR's Vermont Municipal Retirement System, which is required, the town is required to contribute, I think it's six and three-quarter. And I contribute six and a quarter. There's no options. So there's always this thing hanging out there where Sill has to do this calculation. And she cuts me a check for one and a quarter percent. And I got to go figure out where I'm going to invest it. So one of the things that I am learning, a lot of town managers are taking advantage of, is their towns are putting them into the Group C. And so for me, it would be a whole lot easier. But the other thing is it would only cost the town another half a percent. And it would just make life a lot easier. It puts the town's contribution at 8%. It puts my contribution, or eight and a half percent, it puts my contribution at 11%. So the bigger impact is to me, which is fine because Kagan's going to graduate college and I'm going to get taxed to death when we no longer have deductions. So anyway, the 11% would go into pre-tax. Do you know what I'm saying? It does change from a 30-year retirement to a 20-year retirement at age 55. I can't imagine that I'm going to retire at age 55. So for me, it's more about the easier contribution.
You wouldn't rather do, for an easier contribution, you wouldn't rather do, a lot of times, you do an annuity. And that takes it out. You have annuity. It goes in, it's both tax, tax. The way we did it with the union was it was both tax-free for you and tax-free for us. And then it stayed there and it just worked until it paid you. And then you actually could borrow against the annuity. It was, you had more control over it than you would in a normal retirement.
And we can talk about this when we bring it up in the next meeting. I have no option but to be a part of VEMR's. So it's not like I can take my contribution and put it someplace else. I have no choice. It's federal, it's state law that I have to be a part of that program. And we can talk, we can talk about it.
Last, huh? We thought we fixed it somehow.
We did, but I didn't, wasn't thinking about the Group C. It just makes it cleaner. So we can talk about it more.
We tried to fix it.
We did, but it just made it more complicated. It's not a big deal.
Well, that's not a good sign.
It's not, it's not a big deal.
We tried to fix it and we made it more complicated.
Really isn't a big deal, but.
Didn't we make it a little bit better?
Maybe a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
We'll talk about it next time.
Anybody have anything they would like for future agenda items?
Before, well, when we get in a time between floods and before we talk about the snowmobile clubs and Class 4 roads, we probably should have a discussion.
About Class 4 roads?
About Class 4.
About Class 4 roads.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That probably would fit at the second meeting in September. There's not a lot scheduled there.
Well, no, you just have to slow Kirby down enough so I can talk to him. So you have to see if.
That's likely not going to happen.
There you go. See, I'm just, I'm leaving a long entrance into that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Anything else? So are we meeting in two weeks or is this our only meeting in August?
You had said you only wanted one meeting in August, June, July and August.
That's fine with me.
So your next meeting would be September.
I don't see anybody wanting to.
I'm ready for this one to be over.
I am, too.
We all, we all agreed.
It's been a long four weeks.
We all agreed to long meetings in order to have only one.
Correct. But you still have water sewer and you have a quick update in a second.
All right. So before we go to adjourn, we are going to have a quick executive session for informational purposes only. There'll be no action taken on it. And then we'll adjourn and then we'll start our second meeting, which is the Water Sewer Commissioners.
Do you want to run downstairs real quick? That way, nobody has to leave.
If you guys are, if you guys want to stay, go stay. If not, thank you for showing up.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Oh, you didn't see that?
You guys want to keep chatting or you want to adjourn?
No, let's get going.
Adjourn the meeting.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor?
Yay!
Hi.
Oh, what do we -- sorry, yeah.
Just say yeah.
We're adjourning. I --
Meeting's adjourned.
Meeting's adjourned, yep. Okay, we're back.
And now, we all open our water sewer commissioners' meeting. First item on the agenda is citizens' comments. If there's someone here that would like to address the water sewer commissioners regarding an item that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. No? Nothing?
No.
Well, just one, I think that they got it --
Peter, please be quiet.
Peter, we want to move it along.
Move it along, that's true. Well, no, just because they got it together. I've been a citizen for a long time.
So, in our package, there's water and sewer rates that have been proposed. I don't think we've had a --
Well, I gave you your history.
Yep.
So, sewer was last increased in 2014. Water was increased in 2019. So, we're a little behind.
Was it 2019?
Yes. And sewer was 2014.
That's when, I think, we started the base, wasn't it?
2000 -- no, we started the basing a long time ago. We started the basing back when David raised -- yeah, that's probably 2014. Actually, it was 2011. Anyway.
Yeah, I remember being there.
Yeah, you were.
But that's my question.
The reason water increased when sewer did not is because of the water project.
Yeah.
We had to -- our rates had to be a certain level for order to receive funding. That's why water increased till we reached that threshold, and then apparently we never did anything with it after that. So.
Can I ask a rookie question?
Sure.
The floods don't -- based on everything you're talking about with FEMA and with recovery and with all that, the process of recovering our sewer and our water and all that is not something we have to increase our rates to cover because it's all coming from FEMA. Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Sewer, yeah, it'll either come from our insurance or FEMA.
But we're not thinking about July 12th when we're looking at these rates?
No, I'm not.
Thank you.
But we do have an upgrade to the sewer plant that's in the future. There's a few other things.
Yeah, we do have things coming, and I gave you copies of, you know, next five to 10-year improvements. You know, so there are expenses. Both accounts, both funds, have healthy fund balances, which is good, we want that. And we will draw on those, certainly, for some of these projects, but we also want to need to keep those fund balances going. And we at least need to raise our rates enough to cover operating expenses.
So, do you want a motion to increase reflective of this cheat sheet? What do you want?
So, what I am proposing is that you raise your water base rate to 64, your water base consumption to 150, your sewer base to 104, and your sewer consumption to 450 for this time. Then, I think that each quarter, like I have -- this spreadsheet, which is a lot of numbers, I know, I'm sorry, really spreads out getting ourselves to where we should be over the next 18 months, because you can't make this jump in one fell swoop. But maybe you look at it each quarter? It's up to you.
How does it compare with other towns?
We are still less than many of our surrounding communities. And a lot of towns don't do base rates. It's all consumption. We don't, because consumption is up and down. And your base rate, the theory is your base rate covers your operational is what the theory is.
So, right now, the base rate is 64?
The base rate currently for water is 60.
60?
60. Is 60.
Oh, you want --
That base August is what I'm proposing you raise it to.
And the sewer is?
Your sewer is 102. Your other spreadsheet, Arnie, shows you the currents.
All right.
Yeah, this one shows you the currents.
And you want to get from --
I'm not sure if I'm fine with jumping as often and as fast up there.
Maybe not.
But I am very comfortable with an August increase right now.
And that's kind of what I was trying to break it down to. We just take a time and --
As someone who's --
Be okay, but I think we should revisit it.
Yeah.
As someone who's never been on water or sewer in Vermont, for an average person at the end of the year who lives on Main Street in an average three-bedroom house with an average-sized family, how much are they paying in water and sewer in a year, and how much will this increase reflect? In rough numbers, if any of you know.
If you assume that each household is using 8,000 gallons a quarter. Then, a current -- Is $8 --
I apologize if that's already in here somewhere.
No, I don't know if I broke it down that way. I didn't break it down that way. Is $60 for base.
Yep.
Eight bucks for water per quarter. And then sewer 102, and then 410. Four -- no, I'm sorry, 410 times eight, four times eight is 32-something. So, 102 and 38 per quarter.
And so, the base rate is charged per quarter?
It's all charged per quarter.
Thank you.
And then, what it would ultimately, if you did this 18-month plan, at the end of 18 months, you are adding $38 per quarter, which is $152 a year.
Thank you.
Is what you would ultimately be adding.
My bill on town water and sewer is around $1,200 a year.
I'm glad I live out of town. Okay.
I don't know if that's average.
Well, I've replaced three septics. I've replaced three septics in my life.
You put in a new pump, a new well, a drill, a well, and all that, and you put in a septic system, an amount system, or anything like that, you're talking some serious money, too. So, yeah, you're paying for it, but --
But to the average consumer, to you, Arnie, it's, we're talking 150 bucks a year increase.
At least. It may be less for someone else. I've got some heavy showers in the family.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I think there's -- I just gave you, it will take, at this rate, it will take 18 months to get to where we are equaling operational costs for water. Sewer is surprisingly, sewer is okay. It's interesting. Water is the one that's trailing. But sewer has larger projects coming, more expensive projects coming. So, my feeling is just get to August, let's look again in November, but that's entirely up to the board. Do you want to take longer than 18 months? Would you rather take 24 months? I mean, it's a decision that I don't think has to be made tonight.
No. One question I did have is, when the base rate is going from 60 to eventually 75, that's a certain percentage increase. When the usage is only going, is going from 150 to 250, that's a certain percentage. Should those percentages be more equal, or should it be more heavier on the base rate increase? Because now with short-term rentals and things, these houses sit empty, they're not being used as much, so the consumption --
Income.
-- is not coming in.
Correct.
So, maybe the base rate is the one that should be jumping up.
Correct, which is why I chose to jump the base rate at a higher rate. Because the base rate, the theory was, when David put this whole program into place back in 11 or 2011, 2012, was that the base rate was going to manage operational costs. The consumption helped with that, but often was kind of what you were bringing in for overflow. Because it used to be the other way. Base rate was minimal, consumption was what was higher, but then you have seasonal homes, and it was all up and down and all over the place. So, the base rate, everybody pays. Same amount, no matter who you are. The one thing that comes into here that I did not break, distinguish out is commercial properties. So, commercial properties are also on a base rate. A base rate equals 18,000 gallons of usage. So, you have the high school, who has a bigger usage, a bigger demand, a bigger allocation on the system. They are multiple base rates. Single-family residents, Arnie's is one base rate. So, it will have a bigger impact on commercial properties.
Well, rightfully so.
Their demand is bigger.
They're bigger users.
Correct.
We have to maintain an infrastructure to satisfy some of the, you know, especially on the sewer end of it, that there's a lot of issues sometimes also.
Absolutely.
And a lot of capacity that's used by some of the commercial outfits. So, it's kind of fair.
I think it's important, as we discuss this, as this rolls out to residents, to look at how long it's been since an increase, and talk about if we had done a half percent or a 1% increase over the last 10 years, you would be here, we chose not to, now we're here.
Now, we're here. And I think when we finally do, whether you take 18 months, 24 months, however long you want to take to get us caught up, I think at that point, it then needs to be, the beginning of every year, there is just a percentage that is set. And a lot of towns do anywhere from 2% to 5% a year.
Yeah, like cost of living.
Inflation rate, whatever.
Cost of living, yeah.
Correct. And we need to do that and be consistent with it. So, I'm just asking for the August increase at this point.
So, you're -- I'll make a motion to accept Julie's August price increase for the water and sewer.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
And discussion on it. So, we're going from 60 to 64.
60 is --
A dollar to a dollar and a half on the water. 102 to 104, and --
410 to 450.
410 to 450.
Correct.
On the sewer.
Yep.
And both, yeah, so let's vote on that, but I have a question after that.
If you have a question on this?
Well, I would like to, you know, because you talk about the multiple base rates.
Yep.
You know, that doesn't --
Now, be the time.
Yeah, that'll be your time. All right. So, yeah, so the multiple base rate, how is that developed and where is that? Is that per usage? You know, you're saying the high school, it gets a multiple base rate.
So, one base rate, one base rate is equivalent to 18,000 gallons of usage. So, every few years, we run our usage chart. So, in our program, I can tell you how much everybody is using on a quarterly basis.
Right.
We look at that to say, okay, you are using 100,000 gallons of water.
Okay, nope.
Divided by 18, and that's how many base rates.
So, what I'm trying to get to is, could you raise the commercial rate?
It is being raised.
Well, no, you're raising, you're raising, you're raising pretty much everybody's rate.
You want to raise just the commercial?
If we --
No, I wouldn't.
So, you'd think that you could raise, maybe raise the commercial rate more and alleviate the resident?
Can we look at that as the next step? If we're looking, if we're looking at the August step, and then Julie's recommending a November step, perhaps in November we come back and we explore, can there be a further increase on?
Potentially. The other thing is there are municipalities that have a residential rate and a commercial rate.
Well, there, see, in --
I mean, they bill completely different. They bill commercial properties monthly, not quarterly.
Well, but the thing that happens there is you go back to short-term rentals. Soon as you come a short-term rental, you're a commercial.
And then we can increase the rate of water and sewer.
Increase the water rate, right.
On your short-term rental.
Right, because they're going to be a business.
So, how does that impact small businesses on the green?
Depends on their water usage.
But if we're increasing the base rate, then all of a sudden, they're paying more. I'm just trying to think of what the, what the potential impact would be on a small business that does use a bunch of water, not a bunch, but more than --
Restaurants and things like that.
A restaurant and things is going to use a lot of water.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm just wondering.
Is Druze, what's the percentage point for Druze?
Druze is, they pay their fair share. That and the water, they are our biggest user.
I don't think that we can pick and choose who we're going to raise the rates on. I mean, commercial, commercial, it's just defining that term and making sure people understand that that's how we're classifying them relative to their water and sewer.
Well, you classify a resident and non-resident now.
Right.
We tax them, property tax-wise.
Not with water.
Right, but what about businesses? You know, so somebody, I'm thinking of the pie shop, because that's, I'm familiar with that. So, all of a sudden, they're getting a commercial rate? How's that going to impact them relative to?
Well, they probably already are getting a commercial rate. They're probably, how much, you know, you'd have to look at the --
I don't know how many units they have, it just depends on how much they're using. I don't --
Yeah, I think, I think this is an interesting discussion for the next time we're evaluating the price, and we need to afford the time to have a creative discussion about it the next time. Because I do think, Lee, there's a way to look at what Peter's saying and what you're saying. Because if a, if we define commercial as in excess of 30,000 gallons per quarter.
Yeah.
Then you're already setting, you're setting a new benchmark. So, if you're, if you are commercial, but you use less than, you fit the residential model or something.
So, that --
But I think there's creative solutions.
Yeah, I think having this discussion at a different meeting is perfect, but I think that relative to the --
Motion on the table.
Relative to the short-term rentals.
Right now, we're waiting for the $4 increase.
It wouldn't work, it wouldn't work for the short-term rentals.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, we could, we could take a look at exactly how it works with the 8,000 gallons for the base rate, see how it's been applying, see what we have, and see if there's something more creative that we can come up with.
I will look at commercial rates for the next time we have this discussion.
Thank you, Julie, that'd be great.
I told you I wanted to have this after the vote.
No, no, it's good.
So, do we have a second?
Yeah, I second.
Okay.
Any other further discussion on it? Everybody in favor of the increases stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So, Julie, you want to give us an update on the finances also on the, on the water and sewer or not?
Oh.
I mean, they're in good shape, but --
They are in good shape, sorry.
Six months?
Yep, you're right, I gave you those numbers. They are both in good shape, water and sewer. Yeah, what else do you want to know? They're in good shape.
Can I make the motion to adjourn?
Yes, you can.
Second.
Is there a second on that motion?
Arianna jumped on it.
Arianna's the second. No further discussion on that budget. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Water and sewer in great shape.
I'm sorry.
Recording stopped.